Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I, uh, just a quick, I listened last night to the last week's meeting and, and I applaud the two that were here and one on the phone, so we have a whole house of people today, so we're back to the whole gang, so anyway, take a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as written.
You have a motion and a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries. Anybody look over the minutes?
I did, or make a motion to approve them as written?
I'll second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries. Except for the general public concern?
Uh, I brought Dave in, I guess, uh, last week, we accepted Don Pyle's, uh, uh, letter of resignation after forty-three years, and I know talking to a couple of you, you wanted me to bring him up, so you could shake his hand and congratulate him on getting to move forward and move on, so...
Well, I guess, I was the one that asked you to, because I was gonna be gone, and first of all, I, you know, from Carl and Peggy, we were the same, so, um, I'd like to say from the board, uh, forty-three years is a long time to do anything.
Yeah, show up to work every day and...
Exactly, and I think that Humboldt County appreciates everything you did, um, sometimes we don't always get out and shake the hands of the people that make this thing work, but we do appreciate all of your hard work, and, uh, I know you're looking forward to retirement, and it's, uh, probably one of the scariest things that people do because of the fact that you're still used to doing what you do every day, but we wish you the best, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts, and, uh, hopefully you enjoy your grandchildren, and, and I guess, if we get to Clarinet, or Clarinet Lake, we can stop by and see how many fish you got in the boat that day.
There you go. There you go.
But, thank you again.
Okay, well, I, I enjoyed the job, uh, it's been a good job, uh, and I enjoyed, uh, my whole prime year, and I, I'm gonna miss it, definitely, a lot, and, uh, I, you know, I hate to quit, actually, but I, uh, I guess it's just time, gotta move on.
Right.
So, that's kinda what I plan on doing, and hopefully I'll find either something to do with my time.
Sure.
Because I have something keep me busy.
Right, well...
I congratulate you on doing it, when you've still got your health and do something else.
Well, yeah, that's, that's what I...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, many years of service, enjoy it.
Congratulations on it.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks, David, just so you know, you know, appreciation of the county, obviously, but even some of the folks that you've worked with, a lot of them for quite a few years, they've mentioned too, you know, Dave knows a lot of stuff, and it's, it's gonna be different when he's not there, and he'll miss your experience, so...
It's been real good, and like I said, I'm gonna miss it, definitely, so, uh, yeah, stop by.
Oh, yeah, you'll, you'll work yourself into that, I bet.
Yeah, oh, I, yep, well, I'm gonna move on.
All right, thank you, David, you.
Thank you, thank you.
Enjoy.
Okay, at eight thirty-five, which we're approaching, uh, time for the public hearing on the Humboldt County budget for two thousand eighteen, nineteen.
I move we open a public hearing.
There's a motion to open?
I'll second, yeah.
Motion and second, any discussion?
Okay.
I guess the public hearing is now open at eight thirty-five.
Okay, I gave you a couple of pieces of paper this morning, um, one is the compensation board recommendations, those are to be approved, um, after we close our public hearing, and the one is, uh, a resolution approving the budget, after we put all of our numbers together, what is left is our sheet, that's the adoption of budget that is before you, it shows our general basic levy on line, um, two at three dollars and eighty cents, it shows our general supplemental levy on line six at a dollar fifty-eight, it shows the debt service levy for our, um, building down at the L E C at, uh, forty-seven, one forty-two, um, then we have our, trying to follow my lines here, I'm sorry, forty-seven, one forty-two is the, uh, mental health levy, I'm sorry, and the mental health levy is down quite a bit this year because we no longer have case management services, our debt service levy then is point oh eight, one five nine, so a little over eight cents, um, for a total of the people who live in the cities of five dollars and ninety-three cents, the people who live out in the country also have the rural services levy of three dollars and ninety-five cents, so that brings their levy up to nine eighty-eight, three oh one, these levies are, I think it was approximately oh oh two cents, you know, it's just a little bit less than what it was last year overall, yeah, point oh oh two, three three, by the time we took everything off, so, considering, um, we did have a, a nice jump in valuation this year, or for next year, I mean, and our expenses were up, um, revenues were pretty consistent, um, we did have a three and a half percent increase in there for, um, all salaried personnel, um, union personnel per contract was two point five, we had an insurance increase of four point, I think it was four point two.
Yeah, I think that sounds right.
Since we had to have something to go with, we won't know for sure what our bottom line is today, so the knees come.
I think it's pretty close to that.
But at least we have something in there to, to cover that, so with all those increases, as well as the increases in just normal doing business, we were able to absorb that and still keep our levy, um...
I think we need to tell Peggy, yeah, thank you for putting this together for us, made it all work very, very easy, Peggy, thank you.
And always a lot of work to get to the numbers on this page.
A lot of crunching numbers and adjusting to get to that point.
If we look forward to next year's budget, I see two problems, the yo-yo is like this with, not this year, but the following year, that mental health thing is just gonna keep going like this, this year it's down, next year it'll probably be up, also, if they don't continue to fill that backfill, that twenty percent, that's gonna really hurt us.
That's gonna be huge, yes.
We need to talk to our legislators real fast on that, if we lose that backfill, we're in trouble.
And I don't know how they can, that's okay, so see, I don't know how they can drop it that quickly, I mean, if they're gonna reduce it, do a gradual reduction in it, but to drop it by twenty percent and thirty percent and, you know, so on, that's a huge amount, not only cities, but cities.
Yeah, we got a good budget next year, but I worry about the following year.
I was just gonna say, following that meeting that Crandall and Sexton had here a week ago at City Hall, Crandall was talking to Travis Ginkin afterwards, and he said, expect about a third cut next year from that, uh...
Yeah, a third, wow.
From the, uh, backfill, so basically, he said, we'll probably give you two-thirds of what we said we would, but, and I'll expect it to be down by...
Yep.
The other, the other thing that I see is, um, if these numbers get any smaller, I'm gonna have to go back to the I S A C.
I know, aren't they awful, this comes off of the state website, and I was trying to think of how I could make it larger and still keep it on the page, it's terrible.
It does seem like my, 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 when I tilt back to look, it's like, it doesn't hardly change it, so, I'm either gonna need a magnifying glass or a larger area for the, for the magnifying glasses.
And then the numbers I have to check back to my forms are just as small, so when I'm going through checking to make sure everything balances, it's like your eyes go crazy, yeah, they do, um...
But we do appreciate all of your work.
Well, this is, like I said, a lot of way more figures and numbers than this that go into putting this together, so thank you very much, and, uh, I think we, at least, even with Carl's concern, which I think is valid, and what we just talked on the backfill thing, at least this budget moving forward looks extremely good.
Yeah, and I had visited with Kent last week, and we had went over the total revenues of eleven point eight million, and total expenses of twelve point three, so we're spending a little more of our cash balance there, but we'll be okay.
Well, anything else, Peggy?
That's it.
Sure. You're doing a great job.
Awesome.
Lot of midnight hours there.
Thank you.
I say, it's not.
Well, it's a good thing I love working with numbers, right?
I knew...
Well, we'll, we'll let you say that you love working with numbers, and having that been said, I move we close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Close the public hearing, motion and, uh, second at eight forty, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries. Thirty-five, forty, um...
We haven't...
Now we need to make a resolution to adopt twenty eighteen dash five, adopting the compensation board recommendation for two eighteen, twenty nineteen.
I'll make that motion, to adopt resolution twenty eighteen dash five.
I'll second that.
Motion and second, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign, and adopt the resolution, now we need to make a motion to adopt, uh, twenty eighteen dash six, adopt approving Humboldt County budget for eighteen nineteen.
I'll make that motion.
Motion and second.
Second that as well.
And a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries, last week, you only had two guys look back and forth at each other.
I know, I did, I did, I didn't think any decision who was making the motion.
No, no, Rick and I were the only ones sitting here.
You know why those counties are, you only have three now, that must be tough.
Go ahead and sign, not one.
With, with calling in last week, this phone system sucks.
Really? It was not good?
I never heard a word, and if they turned their head away from it, I heard nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Oh, that's not good.
And then you turn your head back, it seems likely, 'cause I had seconded a motion, and you couldn't hear nothing.
We didn't know, yeah, that's, we didn't know how ill you were.
So, but we didn't know if you wanted to hear it.
I didn't wanna hear some of it, I couldn't hear all that, the only thing I did.
The good thing was, is it all came through on the video, 'cause I had listened to that last night, and I could hear it, Dave, Dave?
We have to have a hitman someplace. That's right, I'll take the door, I got big favor.
Well, uh, we have a little bit of time, I don't see a gentleman here yet, uh, we wanna jump down, you wanna do, can we do claims, get those covered, anybody have time to look at the claims?
Rick's still taking time.
I was just kinda getting through them here.
I looked them over, it looks like we had a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, oh eighty-nine point sixty-four in general claims, and twenty-eight thousand, two oh two point oh four in drains, if Rick agrees with that, I'll let him make the motion, that's what I got.
One fifty-eight, oh eighty-nine...
Sixty-four.
Six four.
Twenty-eight, oh, twenty-eight, two oh two, oh four.
Right.
Yes.
I move the approval of the claims.
We have a motion for the claims, if those numbers, uh, do a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Eric, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries.
I'll take that.
How about a motion on the approval for the wine permit for Western Edge?
I'll make a motion to approve the wine permit for Western Edge.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, I'm assuming, there's, it's right there, everything's in order on that?
Yes, everything's in order, um, it's a Class B native wine permit with Sunday sales.
Everything being in place, and, uh, motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries, um, all right, we wanna go to the approval of the resolution for twenty eighteen dash four, adopting a multi-jurisdictional hazmat mitigation plan?
This was presented by Melody a while back, and asked for us to put it on the agenda, so I just retyped it, so we put it in the computer, uh, just signed somewhere down there for approval, and I'll just go online and prove it, and gave it to us a month or two ago.
I sat through a lot of those meetings, they have to go through this gyration, both the cities and the counties, to be able to get that resolution in writing, so if we do have a, a hazard, or a disaster, we can collect funds on it, it's something we have to go through, I think it has to be revised every ten years. Five years? Five years? Every five years, you gotta read it.
So, is there a motion to accept the twenty eighteen dash four?
I will make that motion to adopt twenty eighteen dash four.
We have a motion for Dave.
As a mitigation.
I'll second, second that.
Second by Eric, any other discussion? And you think it's every five years?
I think it's every five years, we gotta redo it.
Okay.
Midas, we just threw that.
Basically, it's done, I was gonna say, it's done by Midas, I'm assuming?
Yeah, we just gotta approve it or change anything that we wanna do.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries. Okay, um, mo, uh, approval of destruct, destruction of, uh, election result, records, what's that?
Yep, um, we're allowed to, yeah.
Sounds like a mafia.
We're allowed, allowed, we're required to keep elections, uh, for, like, the first one I have is for the primary, um, you have to keep it for twenty-two months, primary, general, anything with a federal election, you have to keep for twenty-two months, non-federal elections, like cities and schools, you'll have to keep for six months, so, we have one for the primary, one for the general, from two thousand and fourteen, one for the city election from fifteen, the school election from fifteen, um, we had a Humboldt, uh, I'm sorry, special supervisor election, that was District One, back in two thousand and fifteen, um, we had a Pebble school election, a special, in two thousand and sixteen, and then the Iowa Central Community College special from December of sixteen, so all of those records, which include, um, applications for absentee ballots, the envelopes, the, um, actual ballots themselves, spoil ballots, unvoted ballots, our test decks, um, declarations of eligibility, any other envelopes we had, um, public test results.
They've all reached the twenty-two month?
Yep, they're all, they all can be destroyed, we have to keep tally lists forever and canvas books forever, so those we have a, those we have a record.
We need to do all your storage space.
Well, we've got stuff sitting on the floor, up on the shelves, so, you know, when they start complaining, hey, we don't have much room in the basement, then I start getting rid of election stuff.
Are you sure the Russians weren't involved?
Hey, yeah.
Almost, almost positively sure the Russians weren't involved in any of these mentioned, I would make a motion, prove, prove the destruction of the election records as stated.
We have a motion?
I'll second.
And a second, any other discussion? And we're sure there was no Russian collusion?
Nope.
Definitely, and Dave will get rid of those for us, then.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign, let the destruction begin.
There we go.
Well, we still have a few minutes, we can...
You work these. I got a few things I can, sure, talk to you about, too, um, now that Melody is no longer doing zoning, we have a bill from the, there's an ad that usually appears in the newspaper, um, saying that zoning permits are required, who do you want to sign off on that? To okay it, to get it paid, I know the notices were in the paper, you see them there, but somebody's gotta sign off on it, and it's not going to be there, 'cause she's not there, or she's not doing it anymore.
Could be the chairman, probably.
Good, I mean, whatever you tell me, that's where I'll go with it.
It's fine paying the bill, for the advertising.
Just gotta have somebody's okay on it, so we can pay it.
I'm busy.
I'll, I'll, the chairman of the board of supervisors.
I think that would be the right way.
I agree.
Okay, there's your first one.
Thank you.
With more to come, um, what else do I have? Oh, I did receive some information on what we need to do to get advertising done for, uh...
Engineer?
An engineer, there's a lot of stuff here to read, um, some sample employment agreements, um, he did say that if we put some, an ad together, that we should put it on the engineer's website, which is just fine, there's even some job descriptions in here, sample job descriptions, and if anybody wants to look at any of this, they're welcome to, and then I'll take it and I'll start making arrangements, so, I got a whole pack of full information there.
Well, that was one of the things that we have on our plate, that we had instructed her, and she carried through on the agenda, the budget is complete, and here she comes with the next pile of...
Yeah, we're ready for the next one.
...paper that we're gonna start looking through, so, good.
Yeah, I touch base with the, uh, and it's through the state, uh...
Service Bureau.
Well, and it's the DOT guy, and maybe, that's probably some of that information, as far as how to get that posted, and Peggy probably has that.
Right.
And, so it'll be probably print advertised, and then on that website as well.
Right.
So, yeah.
I'll try to get something put together yet this week before we head to I S A C, um, if I don't get it done, it'll be not straight to then, but I'll try and get something, we have three different communications from the attorney with the opioid legislation, um, this is confidential, so I'll just hand it that way, uh, if you wanna look at it again, you don't have to, um, just trying to keep you on board, um, wanted to check with you about next week's agenda, um, Alyssa was wondering if we wanted something on the agenda again, to have another workshop on the, uh...
Wind?
Wind turbines, and I need to check with the county attorney and see how he's coming along.
Yeah, I think we need to get that on the agenda.
We gotta get moving on it, or we're gonna be standing here, and, uh, flowers are gonna...
Yeah, she thought that was done beyond this week, but...
Yeah, and she was asking about the setback requirements, so, we will get ahold of county attorney, and then we'll get it on the agenda for next week, then, keep that one going. My pile of, between the opioids and the wind turbines, I got a pile of information, it just keeps growing.
And, and what I remember of looking through a pile of emails, I think there's a meeting today in Fort Dodge at one o'clock, uh, on that opioid deal down at the, uh, C F R, but I also have a meeting at one o'clock here that I can't miss, 'cause I missed two of them while I was gone, so, I'm not gonna be able to get to both, um, I guess I'll just try to give him a call and see what, what the, the word was.
I'm never really sure what, how many of these things I S A C sends on to you, they send a lot of stuff to me, but then sometimes they'll send it to, you know, everybody within the organization, too, this one's, um, stating that on Wednesday, the fourteenth, from three to five, there'll be a meeting that Aaron Dickinson, um, that's with Kruger Dickinson and Company, and is gonna be meeting, uh, discussing the opioid, uh, if anybody wants to go to that while they're down at I S A C, I have a meeting with our election, uh, vendor, that same day on updates, yep.
Wednesday, the fourteenth.
So, I'll leave that with you, um, we see something from car tuck pointing, and it doesn't have to be car, but I think we need to have one of the places, I can look back and see who we used last time, probably should have them check the building, it's been a few years since we've had them checked to make sure we're not getting any water damage in, and that our, uh, tuck pointing is holding, um, we did a, a major update on it, probably maybe ten years ago, so at the time that we get it checked, so...
We checked, didn't we do it this, like, one of the first meetings that came, I remember what...
We checked the roof.
We had a, but I thought we did some checking on the, the wall, or the, wasn't it someone from over...
About ten years ago, we had the company in here and did a lot of tuck pointing checking, but I don't remember anything since that time, maybe...
We did the roof, we had that checked.
All those, all those people come out of the same town, don't they? What, what town did they come out of?
I'm not sure where they're from.
Anyway, there's two...
Well, we better...
These are from Benton.
Yeah, we might, if we don't stay on top of it, then we'll end up with a big...
Yeah, it, it would cost a lot more, so, that's all right with you guys, I'll get ahold of somebody, have them come and look at it, see if, see what they think, but I think that's, it's for what it is.
The other, we discussed before I left, was the parking lot.
Yes.
Um, we, we did the parking lot a few years ago, and when I was walking up, um, there's several cracks out there that I'm starting to get, and I touched base with Ben to see if one of the crack people would be, uh, available, um, and also talked to Dave downstairs to see how we'd, you know, we can't really not sand things, and that's to be cleaned off, swept off, and I had, remind me when Ben comes back in here, that, uh, if he's got ahold of anybody, um, see if we...
See if we're gonna do any crack filling this year?
Yeah, if they're gonna do some around here, we might as well see what it costs to fill, 'cause some of those cracks are already pretty good, so...
I noticed, yeah, and if you don't fill them, they get worse.
I think the whole town's getting that way after the...
Yeah, there's a lot of heaving, and it's just gonna get going here, so, well, anyway, we're still five minutes from, unless you wanna start?
John's here, John's here, he's long-winded, I mean, he's short-winded, I'm sorry, John.
Well, are you done with all yours, then, Peggy? All right, well, John, hate to put you on the spot early, but we can start with you, if you're ready.
I'm ready.
Welcome to Humboldt.
Good to be here.
You drive up this morning?
Yes, I did.
Beautiful day to be driving, at least, the noise is blowing.
Had to wear sunglasses.
Yeah.
Sort of unusual, I don't know what I'm gonna wear, after, too many gray days, um, well, uh, thank you all, as always, for the opportunity to, uh, to be on your agenda and talk about some drainage issues, um, first of all, I'll, I'll mention briefly, um, what we have going on at the federal level with the waters of the United States, um, issue that we hope will go away, but it's taking more time to go away than we hoped it would, um, give you a little bit of history on that, as you know, uh, the EPA administration, uh, under President Obama, implemented a rule called Waters of the United States, and that rule, um, had the potential, uh, to bring drainage districts, um, and a lot of other bodies of water under jurisdiction of the Department of Protection, um, immediately when the rule was filed, um, there was a lawsuit filed, a number of lawsuits filed against it, um, Iowa was included eventually in that, in those lawsuits, and as a result of lawsuits, the rule was put on hold until the legal issues could be resolved, so it's sort of been sitting there on hold since, uh, what has happened since then, obviously, is that we have the new administration, and the EPA administrators, and, um, Administrator Pruitt has made the, uh, commitment that he wants to see that rule reversed, um, unfortunately, you just can't wait for magic one to make that happen, it is a lengthy process, uh, to accomplish that, uh, it was a rule that was implemented, although it was never enforced, it was a rule that was implemented, and it has to be backed out with another rule, so, this is a two-step process, what they're trying to do right now is, um, embrace the changes that the rule made, and return us back to the situation that we had before the new rule was put in place, and that situation basically says that EPA can enforce jurisdiction over navigable waters, which would certainly not include drainage districts, uh, so where we are now is a lengthy process, probably a two-year process to get the rule back to where it was initially, um, after that, and I'm not quite as clear on this because it's more of a legal issue, but, uh, the understanding is that there will be another rule proposed after that, to address, uh, some of the issues that were raised in Supreme Court, Supreme Court challenges to me, so we had two challenges to the rule, one was called swank, one was called rapinose, that were both interpretations of the rule, and the second rule that the EPA will put forward will be to address some of the, some of the verdicts that was in those Supreme Court decisions, that's all positive, our understanding is that everything going forward at this point is gonna be positive for drainage districts, so it's a lengthy process, but it is happening as we speak, okay, um, mention quickly, um, the, uh, resolution of the, um, mine water works lawsuit, you know, it's been about a year now, it was March of last year, um, that the federal judge dismissed the case, um, and that certainly was, was an appropriate resolution, and, and probably the best case scenario that I'm capable for, but I, I would add a cautionary note to that, um, one of the key tenets of the lawsuit filed by Waters was the contention that drainage districts should be regulated under the Clean Water Act, so what the lawsuit wanted to say is, you go to a tile outlet, you see the, the water coming out of the tile outlet, that that should be treated just like, for lack of a better term, a factory that is discharging pollution.
Good point.
So, he, the lawsuit wanted to see all, all tile discharges regulated under the Clean Water Act, um, it's unclear how that would work, or even if that would work. It's unclear how that would work or even if that would work. You'd have to go get a Clean Water Act permit from the EPA, from DNR, those permits still exist. They would have to be, you know, invented and plus just the physical process of trying to, trying to implement something like that would be a mess. And the reason I mention all that, despite the fact that the lawsuit was dismissed, that issue was never litigated. The lawsuit was dismissed on other grounds. So the issue of whether or not drain tile and drain discharge falls under the Clean Water Act was never addressed by the court. And the reason I say that is that it is a potential issue out there that could still be brought up by another group if they wanted to challenge drainage practices. One of the reasons that the lawsuit was dismissed against Demond Water Works was that the judge said that you cannot have a unit of government suing another unit of government. So you have Demond Water Works, which is a creature of the city of Des Moines, filing, you know, filing suit against drainage districts, which are statutory creatures, so you have a unit of government suing another unit of government. You had a private nonprofit environmental group that decided they wanna make an amp of themselves and carry that banner. They would not have to worry about governments suing governments. So I'm not aware of anything on the horizon, don't get me wrong. But nonetheless, it is potential out there that could be litigated in the future. I believe we would win. Just from the very start, I believed that we would win the Demond Water Works lawsuit because I think the law's on our side. I think the law's pretty clear, I think the regulations are pretty clear, but that discipline, you can't be sued. And that's the whole issue. And if you're sued, you gotta spend the time, you gotta spend the money to prove that what you're doing is illegal practice. And as we have seen from the Des Moines Water Works case, that can be a very expensive process. So we're, like I said, I'm not aware of any groups that are actively out there looking at suing drainage districts, but nonetheless, I think the potential does, does exist for somebody that would wanna take that on as litigation. Which is a roundabout way of getting us now to what the legislature did this year on water quality and some of the ramifications of that. As we headed into the legislative session this year, you had, I think, general agreement by the governor and by both the House and the Senate that there should be additional funding or conservation practices for water quality practices. There, I think there was general agreement on that issue, but there was a lot of disagreement on how that should be done. So you had the state senate, which basically favored one approach, you had the House of Representatives, and we had Chip Baltimore from Boone on the agenda in December to talk about some of the House concerns, about the Senate bill. And basically, the way the session ended last year was that the House and Senate were at an impasse. And as we came into session this year, the House and Senate were still at an impasse on water quality. There were some other things that changed and basically the scenario became that the Senate had passed the bill, the House decided for a variety of reasons to back down from their opposition and pass the Senate bill and send it to the governor who has signed it. Governor said shortly after she became governor, when Governor Branstad went to China, that she wanted the water quality bill to be the first one to come across her desk, and it was, and she was glad to sign it. So the, the net result of that is there will be more funding, which is good, and IDDA supported that. Couple of issues, however, a lot of that funding is sort of backloaded, so you're not gonna see a substantial, you know, the funding sort of increases as the years goes on, so initially, there is not going to be that much money, but that will ramp up. But having said that, I think most of the legislators would agree, and I think the governor even said so, that while this is certainly a good step in the right direction, that more needs to be done, that the funding they created is not going to be enough and that if we're gonna have a substantial impact, we're gonna have to find other revenue sources. And even, you know, to her credit, Governor Reynolds said, this is, this bill's not the end, it's the beginning. So I think there is still realization out there that in some way, shape, or form, there's gotta be more resources dedicated. And I'll try to tie this all together as we go through my presentation here. So we had a bill that is passed, we have more funding coming, but we have a lot of concern that even with significant changes, there needs to be more revenue.
And they don't want property tax to pay for it.
Correct. So let's add to that another sort of piece of the puzzle, and that is tax relief, both at the federal and state level. As you know, there was a substantial tax cut enacted at the federal level, which is law. There is another tax cut that is being advocated at the state level, which is not law yet, but is being discussed. The Senate has, has passed the bill. Governor Reynolds has put forth a proposal, and that proposal is being discussed on the House side. And I think the, the general feeling is that in some way, shape, or form, the House will pass a different bill and they'll eventually get to the point where they get that bill to a conference committee and make a decision.
You think they'll make it this year, though?
Uh, I don't know. It certainly appears to be past prep.
The House is all up in arms about the Senate's version of tax relief.
Yes, yes. You are correct, they are. So you, again, have the Senate already on board, passed the bill, and you've got the House looking at it. Well, state government is different than federal government. You know, if you pass a tax cut, that's less revenue. We can't.
Can't bring the money.
We can't bring the money.
No.
Budget has to be balanced at the state level. So if you decrease revenue, some way, shape, or form, that has got to be made up with either spending cuts or revenue increases elsewhere in the budget. Now, the federal tax cut, and I'm not quite clear on how all this works, but the federal tax cut, at least initially, does create additional revenue for state government. So the feeling is that some of the revenue loss that they will suffer will be replaced by revenue increases as a result of federal tax law. So that's part of it. The other suggestion I would make, and bring this back to water quality, is that one of the constantly grains that you hear about when we talk about water quality is what's called the Iowa plan, which is the Iowa Water Land Legacy. And that's the three eighths cents sales tax increase. So we have wording in law now that says that the next time sales tax increases at the state level, that if you only increase, increase sales tax three eighths of a cent, all of that would go into conservation programs. And there would be a significant amount of that revenue for water quality through conservation programs. Or if the state did a one cent sales tax increase, three eighths of that again would, because of law already in place, go into what's called the Iowa Water Land Legacy, which is funded for conservation programs. So I think the other piece of the puzzle here, and it's unclear exactly how this all fits together, is, is the potential that sales tax increase could happen. And that creates additional revenue for state government, of course, to offset the loss of revenue from other taxes. I think there, and the conventional wisdom is that this doesn't happen in an election year, and this is an election year. Conventional wisdom is that you don't increase taxes in an election year. But I don't know that this is conventional gear, I don't know that conventional wisdom applies. And I think you can, you can build a good case that sales tax is probably a preferable tax over income tax or property tax. So if you can, if you can show that you're using the sales tax revenue to decrease income taxes, or you can show that there's, you know, you're continuing to fund the back bill, for example, for property tax, you know, I think, I think there are ways to build support for that. I think, you know, and I don't know if that's going to be the case this year, but I, those are discussions that are taking place behind the scenes, I can tell you that. There was active discussions about how all these pieces are gonna, you're gonna fit together. One piece of the puzzle is we funded water quality, but we need more money. Second piece of the puzzle is we've got federal income tax changes, which do create more revenue for the state. Third piece of the puzzle is we're talking about state, state tax changes, which decrease revenue. And the fourth piece of the puzzle is the Iowa Water Land Legacy Fund, which is the sales tax. So how that all fits together remains to be seen. We've got, I don't know, we're middle of March, so six, ten, six, eight, ten weeks left in the session, and we'll, we'll see how this plays out. It's a very fluid situation right now. So that's what I have and be happy to respond to any questions.
Well, so you, you know, we're talking about money, you know. So the one that they passed, the water quality bill, was that the money's coming from the state? How's it being implemented, distributed?
It'll go through existing funding mechanisms set up by the Iowa Department of Agriculture and Land Security. So IDALs, for example, now has cost share programs. So if a landowner wants to put into conservation practice, wants to put in a buffer strip or wants to put in a bioreactor, for example, the landowner can apply for cost share, cost share monies through the state, and the state can award that. So the process is not any different. Landowners will still have to apply. The difference is there's more money to apply for.
But it's a little bit different than some of the conservation practices, going to your local FSA office. Because that's, you know, and they still have had, you know, conservation things, waterways and so on and so forth, filter scripts and that. That's on the federal side, though, if you go there. So this is gonna be applied for, a little differently, for possibly some of the same
The other thing is you all should be aware of is that drainage districts are eligible for that funding. So, you know, you got an improvement you're gonna do in one, in some way, shape, or form to incorporate a water quality practice into the improvement and wanting the state revenues to get that done, that would be potential.
It's the same pot. Through IDALs.
Same pot that, closing egg wells comes out of?
No.
In different pot.
Totally different pot of money. And I, and I will mention that IDAL, that drainage wells, I know that's an issue near to you all, has been recommended in the governor's budget, but really, the appropriations process hasn't started and we don't know what the response to that. I mean, certainly if you're in the governor's budget, it's very positive, and it's pretty rare that you would lose funding that's in the governor's budget, but it has happened before, so we will be watching that to make sure that we continue that revenue stream.
Some of that funding be like for CREP programs and things like that, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just trying to get my mind around, yeah, so there's extra money, you know, we've heard about the three eighths tax, sales tax increase to go to the legacy program. There again, you talked, John, like that could be tied back to some water quality improvement things. I mean, I don't even know who implements that.
I'm not as, as up to birds on the water, water land legacy, what I can tell you is all the distribution of the money is already set in law. So when the constitutional amendment was, was passed on the three eighths cent, that funding mechanism that says who's gonna get what pot of money is already a done deal.
I look at it as whether it's an individual farmer that wants to implement some of these conservation water quality practices, or it's nice to know, because what you do, drainage districts, and we have plenty of them, we may be able to look at it. You know, who, who do you visit with, who do, how do you know? I mean, we, we know the IDALs folks, but we don't know about this legacy thing. And that's not in place yet till the tax increase goes through, sales tax. So something, good that you're keeping us up to speed on this, and I'm sure if something changes, you'll, we'll know. The drainage district or association will let us know.
Yeah.
Well, we're hoping that we keep whittling away at our egg wells that we're, are numbers doing the lead in there.
Means like John said, that's dear and dear, I don't know if it's near, how dear this egg drainage well business is, but I.
Concern, how about that?
It's a big concern. Well, we're dealing with it, no doubt.
Sure.
But I'm thinking in the back of my mind, is some of this money applicable to some of the discussion we've been having on closing these drainage egg wells? I don't know yet.
The good thing about both the CREP funding and the egg drainage well funding is it's not part of the general fund. It comes out of what's called the Environment First Fund, which is revenues derived from gambling, casino gambling taxes. You know, if you're in the general fund, you're sort of in a much more vulnerable state. As money decreases, you're in trouble, as money increases, you know, things are a little better, but when you're in the Environment First Fund, it's a little bit more of a protective status, which is a good one.
Problem is all, both those funds are territorial. Some parts of the state could care less about it.
Sure, that's right.
And we have to make sure we bring everybody along to get our fair share.
Those are those supervisors, tell me we have one drainage district or we have?
Yeah, the whole colony's a drainage district, it all runs off, we don't know about drainage districts. Good stuff, though, I think this might have some impact on us.
Getting back to Waters in the US, that used to be a big talking point with the state, with the feds, and that's not anymore. I think they, at least the Iowa legislators in Washington are very much in bed with us as far as changing that. I don't know how the others feel, but we don't have to talk to them about it anymore, they're on our side.
Well, Scott Pruitt, who's EPA administrator, was one of the, was one, was previously from the state of Oklahoma, Attorney General of the state of Oklahoma, and he was one who sued the EPA over the implementation of the rule. So his, his feelings about it are pre-while.
We got better people running it now.
Well, yeah. And then you mentioned something, though, like Carl mentioned, the Waters in the US, and that's semi-resolved, and they gotta change the whole structure of that, what they're working on, you said it's taking a while. But you mentioned the Clean Water Act was not touched.
Not litigated.
Not litigated. I, and you also mentioned the environmental groups, for the lack of a better term, seeing that Clean Water Act, and that's out there. I hope someone's paying attention to that, because I see that as their next mechanism to cause a big ruckus. You mentioned that, so something that you're, drainage just you monitor. I mean, it would go along with the, like you said, Rick, the current administration's a little more reasonable.
If you review rules that are proposed at the state level, which potentially impacts, as a matter of fact, we had some, some impact on some last year, and certainly the federal and you, same thing. We look at all those and if they are gonna have either a positive, positive impact, we comment, good thing, if not, we also do that.
Right, but that's something that I, I just, per your presentation, that's my, like, takeaway from it, is that'd be my next biggest concern of what they'd take a look at, Clean Water Act.
Well, how, the scariest part is it's how we would supposedly be able to.
Monitor all that.
Any water that's coming from.
Nightmare.
Section.
Right.
Ground that comes into our tile that goes into a drainage ditch with stuff in it. It'd be, you'd know, no way. You'd have little boxes all over the.
But the people that.
Trying to, you know, pull water samples to go tested to get them checked, to get them at what time of year.
Yeah, we have thirty-six-hundred-plus drainage districts and.
Think how many tiles per each one.
Remember, Bruce, these are the same people that would think that would be a wonderful deal, that would like to control the dust that comes out of a combine. And that, we also, same theory, it's, it's virtually impossible.
We have one of the longest testing sites for Iowa State over there by Gilmore City that have been doing testing for a long time.
Right.
And so we feel pretty confident that, at least I do, Iowa State does a good job. And so, we feel pretty confident that, at least I do, Iowa State does a good job with there, and they've done a fantastic job with that, so we're happy to get close to us.
Right.
So-
Thanks for doing what you do though.
We appreciate it. Yeah, very much.
Keeping an eye on it.
Sometimes when we're in a meeting and you start in, it's like, oh God, now what's he gonna say?
Well, I, I tend to, I wanna bear, bear some good news too, and there, there is some good news, but I also wanna make you aware of, you know, there's, there's always a storm closet horizon, and, you know, unfortunately, there are groups out there and people out there that just really despise drainage, and would, you know, be very happy if all the grain that went through, we dug up and it went away, and we have to be aware of that.
But you also know that-
People like to eat also.
Yeah, they like to eat.
Yeah.
And there's-
Well, that's the thought that I've been wanting to-
Yeah.
And the people that are in town, that, you know, go to a, a place and say, well, his yard's really green, well, if I'm gonna be supposed to put four pounds, I wonder if I double that, put eight pounds, and then, you know, it's glowing at night, well-
Your lawn looks pretty good, Bruce.
Mine?
Yeah.
I look the same way, I look at my neighbors', his looks greener. Well, that just means I got a lawnmower.
The pop-up sprinklers help you.
Well, we appreciate you-
Yes.
Good job, John.
Keeping a watch on things.
Yeah.
Right.
Thank you Mike.
Good work.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Boy, Ben's back, and we're seven, eight minutes early, and we have the ability to-
We can take Ben.
We're gonna take a break here.
No.
I think we're just headed right down the road.
We'll take Ben. Keep it rolling along.
We got so many things going on, that we're willing to listen. You got long sheets, papers, so-
Yeah, we got, uh-
Give me that stuff, yeah, I'll take it.
I'll have a cup of coffee.
Thank you.
You have a good, you have a-
Yeah.
You're sitting off?
No, I'll take it.
He looks like he needs it.
Yeah, yeah, I think cause concern for your welfare there.
Anybody else care for coffee?
I will.
Eight?
No, you, hang on.
A little half a tenth.
I'm gonna have this to look at while you're-
Sure. I'm not sure what the order was on the agenda.
Award contract.
Contract first, the way it looks.
Do you want your coffee?
This is the, the B.R. project that was let through the D.O.T. in last month's letting. What you guys have in front of you is the bid dev results from that letting. We have nine bidders on this, with the low bidder being your P.C.I. at just under two-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand dollars. Pretty competitive bids, a lot of, a lot of contractors that we've done work with in the past, and P.C.I. does good work. I guess I'd recommend that the board award the contract to P.C.I., and I can send those contracts out for their signature, and then you approve the contract.
Just one clarification, Ben, it's C-20 Delano.
C-20 just west of Livermore, down through the curves, it'd be, uh, just, just the east of there.
Yeah, blow your house in there.
Yep, yep. This is, you sent this some time ago when you went through it, correct? Same information?
Yeah, we, uh, we let the project in February, it was a February letting, I think you guys signed the contracts back, you-
Quite a lot of them, yeah.
So, this is, it, it takes a lot longer for the process to go through when you're able to be up to on these projects.
Yeah. Like I said, this looked good, and you made the same comments, that you're kind of pleasantly surprised, or-
Yeah, it's, uh, it's-
It's a good number.
Yeah.
I wanna say it's like fifteen thousand cheaper than what we thought it was gonna be.
And it's a good company.
Yes.
And you get a good number from a good company, you're very satisfied.
Yeah, you're right, yeah.
So, this is taking the bridge out, we're gonna pull the-
This is taking the bridge out, removing the guardrail, and putting in a, two twelve-by-twelve box over side by side, so.
Awesome.
I'll make the motion to award the contract to a P.C.I.
We have a motion from Rick, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Motion second, any other discussion? All those in favor of the contract Peterson Construction, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Pose same sign, motion carried.
The second item that I had for the agenda was to approve some truck quote. We sent specifications out to both Don's, Don's Truck and Fairbanks, that we've done work with for the past, oh, roughly fifteen years, buying trucks from them, and we also opened it up for Reese out of Fort Dodge, with their Mack trucks. Sent specifications to both contractors, and last Wednesday afternoon, the, the quotes were submitted by both contractors. What you see is basically a summary of the trucks that they spec, as well as a, a few of the items in the truck. The low quote was Don's truck at five-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty dollars, with sixty-nine thousand dollars in the trade-in for a total of four-forty-five-three-fifty. I guess when, when we look at these, we look at price, availability, how soon we can get them, whether or not the equipment can be swapped out with another truck. If one truck goes down, you know, we can take the blade off of that truck and put it on the next truck. A, a number of factors. I guess it would be my recommendation, by looking at these three, to go with Don's truck.
Okay. You currently running?
We currently run, everything that we've been running has been with Don's truck lately. The first few were, were Sterling, and then they switched and they started selling freightliners, and I believe we've got four or five freightliners right now. So, what we'd be looking at doing is replacing our oldest, highest milled trucks, which are Sterlings, and replacing them with freightliners.
We had some discussion on the equipment part of it, you know, there's no removable equipment.
Okay.
Are we getting some new with that, or?
Yes, this is, this is all new.
This is all new, but it's compatible with existing equipment.
Yes, yes.
And is the old equipment being traded in?
Yes.
The attachments and all that stuff, okay.
So, that is, what you just mentioned, that's a positive along that line, with the swapability of equipment.
Correct.
And wasn't there some concern, I know we've got around, which is right in front of us with the Mac, not quite the same equipment?
It's not quite the same equipment. I know originally we'd looked at, at Reese, because of their close vicinity and the ability to possibly take trucks just down to Fort Dodge and get them worked on. The second quote right here actually would have to go to Des Moines to get serviced, so then you, you lose the whole advantage that you were trying to get with keeping it relatively local. They don't work on their granite M.H.D.s in Fort Dodge, they just do the granite H.D.s. And from what I understand, highway truck is, is very backed up when it comes to putting snow equipment on. Red County's had a truck there since September, and still doesn't have the snow equipment put on it yet.
What do you get on the, with the Don's truck? You've had freightliners, you've worked with them, so the, the maintenance part, or getting something taken in, how have you been with that over time?
It's, it's been good. I mean, it's, it's about, I think it's about a three-hour drive in the dump truck to get to, to Don's, but, you know, they give you a loaner, and they usually, they either bring the truck back to you, or they let you know when it's done. The same thing would be, if, if we went with the middle one with Reese, you'd still be driving two, two and a half hours to somewhere in Des Moines.
Yeah.
Like I said, between the, the price and, and the availability, and the fact that you can swap everything out, you know, Don seems like-
And we get it for this fall instead of next spring.
Fall delivery too. Right, that date is pretty big.
That'd be a year from now.
Well, running the, with the freightliners, which you have some now, generally pretty good service on it?
They're, they're good trucks. We haven't had any issues with, with the freightliners in both the Cummins engine and the Allison transmission. This one I did up the horsepower from the last two that we've gotten-
Good.
To a, a three-fifty, I think. The last ones that we've been getting are around a three-twenty, three-thirty horse, so, little bit bigger truck. On these trucks, I did switch to stainless dump body and sander, the amount of time that we spend.
Corrosion.
Yeah.
You've, you've got corrosion. Lately, what we've been doing is sending the, the truck down to Waller's to get sprained bed liner in the bottom, so that we're not painting the box, or the bottom of the box every year, every other year. And when we started looking at, what it would cost to upgrade to a stainless box versus what we were paying Waller's for the sprained bed liner, it was only like another thousand dollars, stainless.
Now's the time to do it.
So.
Well, I've, yeah, it's kind of a thing, it's not broke, don't fix it, it's not like you're unhappy with freightliner trucks that you're running. They've been working pretty good, and the service and everything's been good?
Yes.
Well, I'm tickled that we got the bids from Fort Dodge, so that we at least have the ability to say that there's the numbers. The numbers are pretty plain. I mean, the, it, the trade-in value versus the both are, are better with Don's, and, you know, maybe he's got an idea where he's going with his used equipment, that he can be familiar with him, but I guess as long as we're happy with their service.
Well, I would make the motion to approve the purchase of the three trucks from Don's Truck Sales, Fairbank, Iowa, as listed on the sheet.
Do we have a motion for the-
Second, Ken.
And a second. Any other discussion?
Payment for these trucks is coming out of next fall's budget sometime.
Uh, it's, it's programmed in the fiscal year 2018's budget, but it'll be paid for in 2019.
Okay.
And the same thing a year from now, when we're looking at motor controls.
All right.
It's scheduled in 19's budget, but it probably won't get paid for until '21.
All right.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
All those same sign? Motion carried. I thought that you sent an email out on the bridge closure that next week-
Yes, Highway Three Bridge is scheduled to be replaced. They're gonna close that road a week from Monday.
Oh, that's gonna be miserable.
Uh, you're gonna see some activity there this week, they're gonna start cutting trees down, where they've acquired additional right-of-way on the four corners of the bridge.
What's the facial detour?
There's red flags marked there, there's some trees along the bank there.
What's the facial detour there?
With that.
What's the facial detour to it?
The official detour is to take our P-63 or State's Avenue North to C-26, and take C-26 all the way west to Highway 169.
So, that's the Bradgate Blacktop, that you're coming from the north, across through the Foster Bridge.
Yes, yeah. It ends up being, if you're trying to turn east on 169, head towards Clarion, it ends up being about a ten-mile runaround. Unofficially, all of the local traffic is probably gonna take the underpass through Dakota City.
Yeah, they should, they should turn that into a toll road.
Yes, yes, they could get, yeah, they could get a lot of revenue there.
Well, unofficially, I don't know how much gasoline it'll take before the first truck tries to sneak through.
I've, I've talked to the D.O.T., I've talked to contractor, I've talked to Dakota City, we're all kind of aware of it. We are trying to get with Wester County, we've got a couple of lighted signs, the advanced signs.
Big flashing sign or something.
Yes, we'd like to get something down there, right at the Y or at the museum that tells, that warns them.
Hey you, don't.
Yeah. There's already three signs that say twelve-foot high clearance, but something additional that'll catch their eyes.
I think that's a wonderful idea.
Yeah, but I'd like to, I'd like to try and get through.
I agree with you.
Look at all the stuff you could repair there. It could be a pretty minimal toll for a car.
So, just sort of, make it whole, and, uh, got my dog. Are we putting some rock down in some places?
Uh, we have spot rocked a couple of places where we've got frost boil locations, soft spots where the mud's starting to come through. We have spotted a few loads in there, nothing too much. I am kicking around the idea of letting the guys start hauling rock en masse for the roads that they want in Beaver Township this week, because as soon as they close the bridge, we can't fit through the underpass, we're gonna have to take the ten-mile runaround-
It's a good idea.
-to get to Beaver Township.
Well, I don't have an issue with that, other than the fact that if we do that, then if we have snow in the next, then we always-
We're gonna have to let it melt.
Um, just plow one down the middle, and we don't have to do double, cause all that fresh rock just goes into the ditch. And the first thing I heard, when I, I don't even know if I got a, the sleep out of my eyes, that someone, we're putting rock down, the next time it snows, we're gonna blade all that rock in? I know, no.
No, we're, we haven't really spread much on the roads.
I didn't think so.
Yeah, it's just kinda spotty, spotty on, on the soft areas.
Trying to keep them on the road for the soft spots, but that's kinda what I, mental telepathy, I thought that was what we'd be doing, but-
But you know what, Ben, that-
I had to ask.
Both, yeah, we're here, but I'm glad to hear that, you know, there's those spots, this time of year, it's, you just almost have to do it, or you really should do it, like you said.
Or you're gonna lose it.
Yeah, and-
Is there very many frost, frost boils?
We haven't seen any yet.
Sixty this week will probably-
Yeah.
Make a pop on him.
Find a few more, and there are a lot of, a lot of guys have got a lot of their corn hauled already.
Yeah.
So, hopefully those people that still have it to go will-
That's before it went up fifty cents, right?
Well, it's not gonna be a problem with the snow this week anyway, but then we've got a ways to go with, before Bruce's concern is alleviated.
Did you find anything on the crack issue, or did you talk to anybody on?
Crack filling.
I had a pavement doctor come in, I need to find a few locations for him. I have not talked to Blacktop Service yet, as far as crack filling. I found all of Paul's old maps Friday afternoon at like four fifteen, so I didn't have time to look through and see what our oldest crack filling is. Usually the process is you look at the old maps, and then you go out and you drive fifty miles of county road to see what our worst roads are.
Well, I know that last year we had a little complaint, that, you know, when we got the ability to move ahead, the, the towns were upset that they didn't get early enough.
Notification.
Well, if you have the ability to have it done, that's one thing, but to wait until September, or October, November, then we're just at their mercy of when they can do it. Well, hopefully it will be done.
And, and last year's, if I remember right, last year's Blacktop Service came in and said, we have the ability to do it right now.
Right.
We're usually, we're September and October with them, and I know we had conversations with the city of Bode, but by, by Blacktop upping their timetable on us, we also put Bode on a little bit of a bind-
Right.
-for what we were doing.
Well, just so we know, that we're trying to work both, sorry for the-
We try, we try and work the cities, but we also try and work with, with the contractors.
So, do you have any, so you don't have a timeframe or locations for crack, crack filling as we speak?
Not yet.
Okay.
Well, just remember, if we get the opportunity, that we can get this checked, we have our, some pretty good cracks that are developing in this parking lot that we repaved a few years back, and trying to save that as long as we can before, so.
But there will be some done somewhere this-
Yes, we will do crack filling this year.
But there again, per the discussion, we don't know if it's in May or if it's in October either.
Right, I haven't, I haven't talked to anyone.
You just don't, and-
Well, I mean, you know, we got snow last weekend.
Yeah, it's a little early, yeah.
So, it's a little early for, for that. The other thing that I sent you guys an email on is C-49. We've had a conversation with the contractor, and their plan is to be here at the beginning of April, April second probably. April second probably to start doing some milling on that route and box cover replacement. And as long as the weather holds, start paving as early as April nineteenth, I think. Uh, Thursday, probably April twenty-third would be my guess.
And that will be the mandatory, we're gonna have.
Three days, do not cross the highway.
Armed guards out there so you don't drive on it.
Yeah.
We got patrol members?
Well, if that's what we have to do, we really would appreciate people staying off because in three days, it doesn't cure, we don't want anybody driving on it. I get the best of all, so. Awesome.
Other than that, I'll go in.
Excellent.
Something for the note. I got complained again. Bruce got the same guy complaining every time it snows. You hit the Webster County line, theirs is clear, ours is filled up. Well, the reason being is we've got white top concrete and they've got black top. That black top melts off quick.
Yep.
So for the record, that's why they're complaining is we've, we've been out there, they've iced it. I followed the truck and he was sanding all the way and.
They, they put down a lot of rock salt though too, don't they?
They do, but theirs is black top down.
I mean, the, the, the difference between black top and white top, you know, black top does heat up a little bit faster from the sun and, and melt the ice. Uh, the flipside of that is it, it melts the snow and creates a wet surface and then if the temperature drops quick enough, you've got ice on that black top.
Yep.
Um, white top usually has a little less maintenance involved. You're not going around crack filling the white tops. I mean, we've got, we started PC paving back in two thousand and eight and I see there's a little bit of cracking on that surface, but that's ten years of nothing. You know, how long ago did you pave parking lot out here and you're already gonna crack fill it?
Probably three years ago.
They, they, they're both positives. I mean, I, I'm, I'm not downgrading either product. Um, there's just differences, there's nuances with both of them. And yeah, I, I know who you're talking about.
Well, so you've heard it, I've heard it, everybody's probably heard it. And I talk about it.
Everybody on Facebook.
And, and we determined there is a difference between black and white. If it's that simple, black and white, but then you get the question, oh, is Webster County using more?
Than anything different.
Are they using something more aggressive? And I don't know what their mixture is, but.
They might have a hotter batch. I, I haven't talked.
We don't know.
To find out if they're running a hotter batch than us, but they're, they're putting down the same product that we are.
We don't know if we got more rain than they got.
Which that was part of it on the last storm, on the last storm too. I mean, I drove a lot of those routes. If you took the black top north into Thor, running north into Thor, we were able to peel all of that off, but north of Thor, we couldn't peel any of it off until day two, I think.
Right. And you've been doing a good job when you say the peeling, you know, where it, with black tops, where it does loosen up enough and you're rid of it.
Yep.
That's been awesome that way. For the sake of argument in a public meeting, just ask Webster County when you get a chance, don't spend a lot of time, are they doing something different? Are they mixing something different? Are they putting more salt than sand and rock? You know, just, but otherwise, I think we've really stepped up our road concerns with slipperiness and done a really good job. And I said, I wanna mention that peeling off, there's places where they get out and they just get rid of it and you're done with this stuff.
Right.
And, you know.
That's the goal.
Yeah. And, you know, on the flip side, we wanna make travel as safe as humanly possible. Been really making great strides. And then you want more stuff on there, but then, oh, here for a couple hours, we've got a lot of grit, sand, abrasive material. If it does thaw enough and you can scrape it off, then the next call you get, why did they scrape all that off to the side of the road? Well, it's a happy medium. We're doing a pretty darn good job working with it and we're gonna keep, like I tell people, we're gonna keep doing the best that we can. We've made strides and we're gonna, obviously we're addressing it here today and I hope we don't have any more slippery conditions the rest of this year.
Our guys like to start their work at seven as opposed to coming in at four.
Right.
Um, those are long days and I applaud their.
Yeah, and they have really gotten after it and improved a lot of.
No, our, our guys, they want, I mean, our guys wanna get the ice off, you know, especially, they see the same thing when they run down there. They see that Webster's gotten everything squared and they grind on it as, as much as they can. And I think we put sand down the centerline of the road quite a bit this year. You know, we had to mix a few times.
Yep.
I talked to Guy in Thor and he thanked you very much.
What's that?
Guy in Thor, he says, "I had hell to get to the Highway Three. When I come home that afternoon, I sailed right on by."
Yep.
He said, so he appreciated the extra effort of sanding.
I'll pass it on.
No, and that's like, we've said this before, that, and I wanna say, like I said, where I've seen the roads where it's been scraped off and it's been way improvement. They're really getting after, like Bruce said, they get out early in the morning, they tear into it and really address it. So, we're gonna keep doing it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks, Bill.
Can I ask you a question?
Go for it.
Is there, um, with the bridge coming out on Highway Three and so forth, does direct contact with the school, that should make quite a difference in the buses making the detour route around there?
I left a message with Leo Riegel's Burgers voicemail on Thursday afternoon or Friday, Friday, 'cause I didn't get home till about six Thursday. So it's Friday, I left a message on the bus barn voicemail, so.
Yeah, I think they've known about it for a while.
Yeah, and I hope that, uh, the bridge replacement goes quickly.
With no hiccups.
Like the last time.
Like the one at Webster County.
Yeah, like the last time they had the pipelines all ready at four and the river came up and tore them out and had to start over. So that's the reason that one took so long. We're just hoping the water stays low and we get it done and out of there, so. Think we're ready.
She's two minutes late.
Well, now.
We've been standing there a minute and a half.
Is it already, do you wait till eleven?
Sure, you might need to leave for the next one, bud. What's new?
Well, welcome.
Thanks.
That's the insurance.
Everybody's favorite topic, insurance.
Yep.
Denise makes it everything though.
I tried.
Would you like to go up?
Oh, thanks, my bad.
How far did you drive in this morning?
I came from Burlington this morning.
Good girl.
Wow.
Yeah.
Left home about four o'clock.
I left about five o'clock.
You didn't sleep, did you?
No, not too bad. Little bit, maybe.
Need a reload kit? She might talk to her.
I like to stick around that long, but yeah, I'll take one. Thank you.
Want coffee? There, have a coffee.
Just be like the same information that when you went to that insurance, be pretty similar.
Yeah, but it'll be just basically our county instead of the whole group.
Good. So Denise is.
Probably some groups.
Denise is there, Wes is, I just wanna.
Of course, yours.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we had our annual IGHCP meeting a few weeks ago and at that meeting, of course, Rick was, was present and during that time, we give, um, all the claims information, not just for Humboldt County, but for the entire trust. And we spent a lot of time on kind of a macro level of information as it relates to the whole program. So what I did for today's meeting is just included a couple pages as it related to the big, the trust, um, and then really wanna focus on how, um, you know, the renewal affects Humboldt County. So in your packet, if you go to tab one, the first, that first page in there, um, again, this is, this is on the trust level. So this is for all thirty groups that are in IGHCP. This page is intended to show you what the trend has been, um, as it relates to the cost increases of insurance in the state of Iowa. And then next to that is what the IGHCP renewal has been as it was delivered to us, okay? So when I, the reason I put emphasis on that is because this year and in years past, when we've had a higher renewal, we made modifications and changes so that we didn't accept such a high number. So this year, um, under the renewal, you can see I've indicated sixteen point eight, but the average renewal, um, is really closer to four, four and a half percent. So my numbers are very conservative. Um, I did that on purpose. If I used real numbers, that six point eight eight percent year-over-year average would be closer to about two and a half percent. So we, we kept our renewals, um, year-over-year for the program very low. Okay, on the next page then, this is the claim for, again, this is for the whole trust. So for the calendar year twenty seventeen, five months, I'm showing you what our enrollment was. So on average for the entire year, our enrollment was three thousand one hundred and seventy-seven employees. So those are the physical employees of the cities and the counties. If you add the dependents on there, then our enrollment was just over eight thousand. Our claim's almost thirty-eight million and same as our premium.
Pretty good.
So we ran about a hundred percent for the two thousand seventeen calendar year, um, which is high. We wanna be below that. We wanna be like the, below ninety percent, somewhere in there. Um, with that ratio indicates that really, you know, Wellmark paid in claims the same amount of money as they took in from us in premium.
But, but when you look past, you know, through the months, it really bounces around.
It does, yep. It does. And the smaller the group gets, the more bounce you see.
Yeah.
The larger we get, that creates the consistency. So, um, we just have one month in for twenty eighteen so far, the month of January, we're at about thirty-two hundred members, our employees, eighty-one, seventy-four in membership, and we're still running over a hundred percent of just the month of January.
But part of that, with December is a hundred and twenty-six, we probably have some carryovers from that.
Yes.
Higher number.
So there's, um.
Lower than the January.
For instance, I know that we had a half a million dollar claim come in, in December that was, um, it was fractured. So I, I don't know the details on it. I've asked for more details on the claim. It was a child or a teenager. I know that. I know which group the teenager was from. I don't know what the situation surrounding the injury was, though. I have a teen, adult, or a, you know, something like that.
Yeah, one or two incidents can really bump that number.
Absolutely, yep. Yeah, half a million dollars is a big, a big difference. Um, so on this next page then shows you kind of a snapshot of our history since we've been together. Well, together in IGHCP, 'cause you guys were with me prior to IGHCP too, but this shows, um, you know, while in IGHCP. So the first year that you came in was two thousand and five. So we reduced your Wellmark premium. Okay, so at the top of the page is gonna show kind of a snapshot. Upon entry, you say our, um, your cost increased by point four zero percent. Your average increase in the insured premium, so the Wellmark portion of your premium, um, from two thousand and five through twenty seventeen has been two point three seven percent. We've increased your partial self-fund on average to six point four four percent. And since two thousand and five, your average increase in total costs, so this is all numbers, has been, um, under three percent at two point nine one.
I don't think you can beat that anywhere in state of Iowa.
You definitely. So then all of those numbers below, um, it's just how I got to the summary above. Just kinda show you the math. So, um, the total family rate that I use, I use the family premium to use my benchmarking, um, and then that takes you through twenty seventeen. Okay, so now if you go to tab two, this shows all of the groups in IGHCP, but I've intentionally whited out all of their group names and kept yours, um, obvious. So you could see what your loss ratio is each of the years since two thousand and seven. Um, so kind of to Rick's point, you have, you have good years and you have bad years, um, and we know that. That's gonna be the case with every group. The whole reason we got together is so that during your bad years, you're, you're being offset by those that are having good years and, um, et cetera. So this year, uh, in twenty seventeen, twenty sixteen, not so great. Um, you're running right at a hundred percent, but if you look at your loss ratio from two thou, over ten years, it's great. I mean, eighty percent over a ten-year period is exactly where I would want you to be. The problem is, are those, you know, when you see those hundred and eight percent, ninety-eight percent, hundred percent, you guys on your own would've been looking at twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four percent rate increases if you were by yourself in, in those years, unfortunately. You're not, so.
Well, that bottom one is a hundred and sixty-five.
Yep.
It's her first year in.
Oh.
And that's, they, they don't have an average.
It's not off to a good start.
Kick them out. Kinda high.
Kick them out.
They'll leave it out, I don't worry about it.
So are we, that's one of my questions and that's what I asked Rick when they come back, was are we starting to limit the numbers of incoming that we're?
No.
Still accepting or, we're open arms accepting or we selective?
We're selective. We're selectively accepting, I would say. Um, we, so Wellmark has opened the market a little bit more for us than we've had in years past, so we can let more groups in than we could have prior. But they've also given me the last look authority. So they said, listen, we're pretty much gonna let anybody come into IGHCP that you want. We'll quote, give you a quote.
Except for schools.
Except for schools. But, um, if you get a group that you don't want, you don't like the way they look, then I can make the recommendation to the board, guys, I don't think this is a group that we wanna take on this year. So, um, if we got a group in and I studied their health history and I saw that there's a pending transplant or, you know, there's something going on with their health history that could hurt the existing membership, and I've done this before with a county, a very southern county, I said, you know, not now. We're not willing to take on your risk at this time because as much as we wanna increase our membership, I, you know, I don't want that to happen at your expense because, um, that would increase everybody's rate. So we're careful and I have a advisory committee that consists of seven IGHCP board members and I, um, meet with them on a pretty, pretty regular basis and that is, that, that's the type of topic that I cover with them is, you know, um, this probably is or is not a risk that we wanna bring into IGHCP. Okay, so we're starting to focus now on Humboldt County on the next page. This is your claim for twenty seventeen. This is your claim five months. So you can see each of the months, what's gone on with your employees, um, as far as participation, your health plans, the members by premium, just the claim to get to your loss ratio. So again, back to the point of it doesn't take, you know, much to get that loss ratio upside down. You had a terrible, um, November, you know, you were over two hundred percent. October wasn't great either. So you get one or two of those bad months in there and then that really gets you upside down on that loss ratio. But again, um, you being one group of sixty-eight people, you having a bad year just isn't gonna have, you know, a real impact on the overall, um, you know, trust because there's so many of you. Okay, on the next page then, we all, um, this is your partial self-fund claim. So that page I just went over that where I showed you your, your loss ratio, that's reflecting your Wellmark claims, your fully insured claims. If you wanted a real picture of what's our total claims utilization, you'd have to add these numbers to the prior page numbers because, um, in twenty seventeen, eighteen, this, and this is, um, through January, we've paid out an additional seventy-four thousand dollars on your behalf to pay for your self-funded claims. So those, that seventy-four thousand dollars is from July first through January. So if you compare that to last calendar, or last plan year, for the entire plan year, you were at a hundred and fourteen. So your claim, your partial self-fund account's running a little hot this year. But you have a healthy reserve, so that'll offset that with no worries. Okay, so this next page shows you the large claims within your group. So anybody that made this report belongs to you. These are your employees and/or their dependents. And these are the people that are under medical management. They're watched closely by Wellmark, by myself to see what's gonna hap- by myself, to see what's going to hap, we watch these claims closely to see where they're going to go. We, I regularly check the prognosis of these people, so I know if these are going to be ongoing risks for you, or if there's something that looks like maybe they were a premature baby that, you know, you had an impact, but then baby's wealth was not going to affect them long-term. So, this first one is ongoing, and the prognosis is that it's going to be ongoing. Currently, we've paid, Walmart's paid 375,000, almost 376,000. This is the spouse of an employee. How you can tell that relationship is if you look the 1, 2, 3, 4th column over, you see an F. That is indicative of a spouse. An E would be an employee, and a D is a dependent child. Okay, so as you go through there, you're going to see that all of your large claimants are active. What that means is they're all still covered and participating in your healthcare plan. Sometimes you'll see one in there that's been canceled. That might mean the member no longer works for you, or maybe has retired, but for whatever reason, is no longer on your insurance. The people that make this page are those that have had a single diagnosis, and that diagnosis has paid in excess of $10,000. So, you could have a person on here twice if, let's say, they've had-
$9,000. Two different types of claims, right?
Two different diagnoses, yep. It's by diagnosis. So, if somebody has, you know, just had an unfortunate year, they had a hip replacement, and then they broke their collarbone, they could collectively get over $10,000 in claims, but they might not make this list because they didn't have a single diagnosis that hit $10,000.
Because if we added this up, it doesn't add up to our $999.
No, these are just your, what we call your shock claims.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, the next page is your receipt and disbursements report. This shows the accounting of the money that we receive from you, and then what we do with it. So, the top section there is going to reflect things like premiums, and fees, and funding, and then below there shows the disbursements of those monies. And then at the bottom, you can see the claims account balance and the trust account balance to get to a total. The claims account balance is what we use to pay your claims, not your Walmart claims or your self-funded claims. For a group your size, that reserve is very healthy, so I, again, as I have in past years, I would not make a recommendation to increase your new money coming into your self-funded program. In fact, based on today's conversation, we could reduce it if you wanted. Okay, now the renewal.
Yellow sheet, right?
Yep. Okay, so, this renewal is split into a couple of sections, because I thought it was important that you see where we started, and then where you ended. So, the top yellow section is what I'm going to go over first. To the left of the numbers indicates the medical premium component. So, your medical premiums make, are made up of a Walmart premium, claims, funding, and fees. And then that gets to what we refer to as your total premium. And then next to that, you're going to see your current rate. So, you have your Walmart premium for a single of $566, and your family of 1416. That's the number that increases each year. That's the Walmart premium. Those other numbers don't generally increase. In fact, we try to decrease them where we can. So, your partial self-fund claim, for today's conversation, I left the same as it is today, so we could do an apples-to-apples comparison. So, if you look adjacent from the 566, 61, and the 1416, you'll see what our renewal numbers were when we received them from Walmart in January. So, your single rate went from 566 to 661, and 1416 to 1654, which was reflected of a 16.8% increase from Walmart. So, when I got that 16.8% increase, you know, I'd obviously decided myself, that's not acceptable. There's no way that we could take a 16.8% increase on a premium that's funded by taxpayers. That, that premium increase of 16.8 was the equivalent of over $7 million. It was a $7 million, over $7 million increase for our program. Again, we had to, we had to figure out a way around that. So, so to go on, so after you look at that 16% increase of those Walmart numbers, you can see then that I kept your funding the same, your EBS billing fees the same, the consulting fees are the same. I was able to get a decrease in your administrative fees, so those went from 933 a person to 783. And then there's no, no cost for a legal fund anymore, because that's fully funded. We don't need any more money there. So, if you look at all of those numbers combined, that gets to your new premium that's proposed, which was a 14.98% increase. And the reason it went down from the 16.8 is because we're only increasing one of the numbers, you know, we're only increasing the Walmart premium. We've got a reduction there in another area, and did increase those others, which reflects that 14.98. Still, obviously, not a workable scenario with today's city and county budget. So, and I saw this coming. I saw this big renewal coming. There's some additional taxes that are, that are inside this premium that we're not paying, that we weren't paying at renewal last year, that's owed to the federal government, plus I knew our claims were running high, so I saw it coming. And because I saw it coming, in August, I started quoting IGHTP. So, I took IGHTP to the market and talked to other insurance carriers in anticipation of Walmart giving us a big increase. So, we, we met with and got, you know, all of the information necessary to quote to the self-funded market, as well as United Healthcare and Aetna. In Iowa, we don't have a lot of options without drastically losing doctors. So, as I started doing my homework and comparing those networks, the doctors that we're going to be in today, that weren't going to be in if we changed health insurance companies, it made me stop and think, okay, if we're willing to make a move away from Walmart, and, which would make, which would mean our drugs change, what drugs we have access to, it means that what, what doctors we have access to would change, I thought, why wouldn't we look at what other options relative to networks and drugs are available with Walmart? In other words, if we have to change networks anyway, why don't we look at a different Walmart network that might give us a bigger premium savings? So, I requested that information from Walmart, and the network that I asked for was, is called Blue Choice. Blue Choice is Walmart's second-best network. It has 100% of the hospitals, just like your current network does. It has 96% of the docs. Your current, your current network has 98% of the docs. You still have access to, you would still have access to the blue card, which means any state in the United States that you go to and receive care. For instance, if you go to Mayo Clinic, there, because Mayo Clinic's part of Blue Cross Blue Shield of Minnesota, they're still part of your plan. If you go over to Nebraska or South Dakota, still in your plan, because they're part of Blue Cross Blue Shield of Nebraska, Blue Cross Blue Shield of South Dakota, and so on. So, I felt like if we could get a decent savings by using that network, that wasn't going to disturb the masses. You know, remember, we've got 30 groups in IGHTP, and all but two groups in IGHTP have unions, okay, and they have bargaining agreements that I can't interfere with. So, when I'm looking at making changes, I have to keep in mind that there's probably 90 union contracts out there, and I can't do something that puts you all or any of my other groups in breach of that contract. So, understand that I've, now I'm faced with, you know, a 17% increase, equivalent of $7 million, 90 union contracts, that I can't make changes to deductibles and coinsurance and, you know, copays and those kinds of things. So, you know, I was limited with what I could do, that again, didn't affect the masses. So, ultimately, going with a new network and staying with Walmart was my recommendation to, to my advisory committee. And I worked on that recommendation with them, got in the weeds with them, make sure they completely understood it. We worked on that for about two months, two and a half months, and then ultimately, the advisory committee made the recommendation to the IGHTP board to make the change, to go to Blue Choice and change our drug list, which I'll go over a little later.
Was that Alliance Select prior to that?
Alliance Select is what we're on now.
Okay.
What we're going to is Blue Choice.
Blue Choice, okay.
Okay, so those are two key words. Alliance Select is your current network, the new network would be Blue Choice. Walmart, we couldn't get any savings by allowing you to stay on Alliance Select and Clay County on Blue Choice and Winnebago on, you know, we all had to do this together in order to get any savings. So, by doing that, I took everybody's renewal from that 16.8% to under 5%, okay? So, I mean, for you guys, you went from 14.98 down to 4.42. So, I don't want to say it was a no-brainer, because it definitely wasn't. I mean, it, it was a lot of work, and it was, you know, a lot of studying, and making sure that we still had good coverage for everybody. I can tell you that this network that we're going to is still a better network than the competitors that I looked at relative to your options in having to move. You know, so.
Denise?
Yes.
Is it safe to say, this is like a tiered thing within the Walmart/Blue Cross, you know, structure? We stepped down a notch.
You stepped down a notch in network.
Yep. As they put this together, and it's sad, you know, thanks for all your, I'm sure this is, is not that simple, but are they just going to keep raising it, raising it, raising it, raising it? I mean, eventually, isn't, you know, be aware that it's a group, or not a group, or that, people are going to get to the point of saying, you know, we're done with this. This is ridiculous.
I mean, I think-
This is a huge increase.
I think that people are being priced out of the market, yes. I do think that's-
Well, they're being priced this group out of the market.
I don't think that's the case here. I think we deserved every bit of rate increase we got.
Really?
By the numbers.
By the numbers.
You know, and, and I can tell you, if Walmart was sitting right here, they would laugh and agree with me that when I got this rate increase, I mean, I went berserk. I was livid, and I felt like they were pricing us out.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
I was mad, I mean, but I can tell you that I know these numbers inside and out, and after I settled down and I took the time to make sure I understood what I was feeling with.
Regroup.
Regroup.
If we, basically, the Walmart guy told us if we weren't such a large group, we'd be basing 20, 20 to 30% increases.
Without question.
By the numbers that-
Yes.
With our numbers that we have, we'd be looking at a 20 to 30% increase.
You know, Walmart is often painted as the bad guy. You know, they don't always deserve that. You know, they don't have to make millions, I would agree, but they can't lose money, or they're, or they're not, or they're not around, right? And we've seen that. We don't have principal anymore. We don't have American Unity anymore. We don't have Unicare anymore. We've lost all of these insurers in the state of Iowa because of that. So, and because of healthcare reform and all of those things, but I promise you, if I didn't feel that you deserved, I have fought super hard for you guys every single year, and I get these rates as low as I can get them. That's what you pay me to do. This is the best option I could come up with, with what I have in front of me. It was important to me, not only to get these numbers down for you and for your current budget, but we have to do more than putting a band-aid over this. We just can't do that anymore. The claims are high, and I'm, and I'm not seeing anything happening group by group by group to control that.
Maybe we can have a discussion on that, but while we're on this topic, and maybe there's more in this presentation, I mean, typically, no matter how you slice it, you tend to, tend to get what you pay for. And I'm sure you'll probably do some more further explaining with the differential from, you know, you said big words like Alliance Select.
Blue Choice.
Blue Choice. I'm sure you'll, through this presentation-
Exactly the same.
What, because, you know what?
We're going to see what you're giving up.
If you, using a car example, and you cannot group fund the new purchase of a Cadillac, and you're going to buy a Kia, there is going to be a difference in options.
There is.
So.
There is. So, but here's what I had to weigh.
Yep.
Are the, are the giveaways, are the takeaways equal to, better than, worse than $7 million? And I felt like there's a lot we can do with $7 million if it's not leaving these buildings and going to Des Moines, right? I mean, we can't, we just can't do that. So, I'm going to go through exactly what it means for you guys. I know it's-
Well, it's not just, it's us. I mean, it's everyone that's covered under this.
It's everyone that's covered, but I mean, I'm sure that you're not going to lose sleep if a city of five employees, doctor's not in the network. You're going to lose sleep if your doctor's not in the network.
Well, we're going to be a lot more concerned locally than distantly.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
Right, so.
And one thing I just want to mention, in your 4.42% increase, 3.4% is your affordable care tax.
Yes, so three, thank you. So, 3.4%-
They don't want to call that tax, but it is a tax.
It is a tax. 3.4% of that is, is going to just pass through Walmart's hands and go to the federal.
Yeah, Walmart doesn't get that.
Certainly, yeah, that's noted here. And so, obviously, like Rick, if you take that off of 4. whatever, it's extremely minimal, so great work on your part, and I don't want to interrupt your presentation, because I'm sure you have this all spelled out.
Well, while we're on that topic though, especially Peggy and Chris for your benefit, so, that 3.4% is in effect for the calendar year 2018, but it goes away January 1st of 2019. So, if you look at your new Walmart premium of 595 and 1487, that, those numbers are going to be decreased by 3.4% on January 1 of 2019. So, about October, I'm going to get with you and tell you what your new Walmart premiums are. They're going to go down. So, we've been there before. We've done this, right? So, you can, I'm going to give you a choice. You can have a mid-year premium change, or you can have the 3.4% go into your partial self-fund, and then use that money to offset the following year's premium. So, I'll get into that in more detail, but, so, the 4.42 that I'm showing you today is really a six-month renewal, because in six months, that is going to drop by 3.4%.
Obama Care goes away.
Doesn't go away.
They restructured it.
Again.
Is that a correct term? Not that we are trying to work with that, but they restructure, they got that much done.
Yes, they're working on restructuring.
And that much they got done.
It's moving target, yes.
They took that tax off.
They took that tax off.
They're in on it.
Yep. All right, so that next page is just taking off that 16.8% renewal and only showing you what the board voted on. So, that's kind of a repeat. Okay, so the following page is your current set of benefits. Your employee deductible is $750. They have 9010 coinsurance after their $750, which means that they pay $750. They have to do that one time a year, and then their deductible's met for the year. Once their deductible's met, they pay 10% of remaining cost of whatever they're billed, until they reach their out-of-pocket maximum, which is $1,500. So, the most an employee will pay for medical expenses in any, any plan or calendar year is $1,500, and then everything's covered at 100%. Okay, if they were to go to a physician for a doctor's office visit, the cost is $10. If they go to a physician for preventative care, there's no cost. So, the physicals and those types, anything that's preventative, those are covered at 100% with no employee cost.
Didn't the, the copay go in the out-of-pocket last year? That $10 copay, that's part of the out-of-pocket cost.
That's correct.
Didn't used to be that way, did it?
No, that changed in- No, that changed in 2014, I think. Your drugs are no cost for your generic. There's zero cost to the employee for a generic drug. Your brand ages are 15. Your formulary brand ages are 15. Your non-formulary brands are 30. Your specialty are 85. And if you utilize the mail-order program, you can get a three-month supply of drugs for two copayments. Okay, so unless we decide something otherwise, I'm currently not making any recommendations to your employees' benefits. The one thing I'm going to circle back to is co-insurance. If you look at this page that we're on, you see your employee's co-insurance is 90% in-network and 70% out-of-network. I do want to circle back on that because I might, we might want to make a change to that out-of-network co-insurance. And I'll come back to that. Okay, so the next couple of pages.
We're at four, aren't we?
We're at half four, and we're going to look at the next two pages. These, I know, that's sorry for the tiny font. It's not my report.
Goodness, glasses, right?
Okay, so remember I said your current network is Alliance Select? Your new network is Blue Choice. If a provider shows up on the next two pages, that means they're in Alliance Select currently, but they are not part of the Blue Choice network. Okay, so let me make that clear. If you see a provider's name on the next two pages, they are in your current network and they are not in your new network. Now, before you panic, I want to say, if they're not in-network, all that means is a deductible and co-insurance applies to those claims, $750 and then 10%, instead of the $10 copayments. So let's review this page. If the claim dollars are in black, there's no red, that means there's no change in the way the claim will be handled with your current network to your new network. So let's look at that first person on there. It's a physician services of Missouri. Somebody went to that provider for the treatment of allergies. If that person goes back to physician services of Missouri, that claim will be handled exactly the same way. That's what we refer to as a deductible claim. Hospital claims are often referred to as deductible claims. Claims where your deductible is applicable instead of your $10. Then the next set of services, we have a couple ambulatory services, anesthesiology, and then some cardiovascular stuff. A lot of that happened at Mayo Clinic. If, they are not in Blue Choice network. However, because they're part of Blue Cross Blue Shield of Minnesota, this person would go to Mayo Clinic and deductible and co-insurance would apply, just like it did today, and that claim wouldn't be processed any differently. So you didn't lose access to Mayo with this change. What you're going to see that's hard to swallow is we don't have really many chiropractors in Humboldt area that are in this network. And here's why. Blue Choice started out with Walmart about 15 years ago, and it was intended to be a very skinny network. They actually limited the amount of chiropractors they would let in. They don't, and that's changed over the last 15 years. 10 years ago, I wouldn't have even considered Blue Choice as an option for you guys because the network wasn't very good. It's come a long way since then. How they determine on the chiropractors that come into this network is based on the population of Blue Choice members. So, if Humboldt County is on Blue Choice and all, how many people did we say are covered? And you've got 192 people carrying a Blue Choice card, all of a sudden the need to add chiropractors grew, okay? If there aren't other Blue Choice members around here, then there's no need to add them because they're already part of Alliance Select. They don't need to be part of Blue Choice. So, why would Walmart have two networks? Why not just have one network? Walmart actually has like six networks. This is, they have some HMO networks. This is not an HMO. You don't need a referral to go to wherever you want to go. Under this network, the doctors are paid less than what they're paid with Alliance Select. The discount is deeper.
I guess some chiropractor complains about that a lot.
So, we are working with a couple of the chiropractors on here. And when I say lead, I don't necessarily mean me. Walmart's provider relations people. Nelson was a popular one. Cirx was, and Rogers. We're starting with a couple and trying to get them in, and then we'll go from there. So, Plan A, we have Plan A and Plan B for your chiropractors. Plan A is let's get them in your network so the $10 copay works. Employees don't see any difference between today's plan and July 1st plan. That's obviously optimal. That's what we want. Let's say, for whatever reason, we get Cirx in, but we can't get Nelson in. And you guys say to me, absolutely not, under no circumstances, we have to have Nelson in our, in our Blue Choice network. We have to have our employees pay $10 when they see him. You can partial self-fund that if you want. You can also do this. You could say, you know what? If an employee wants to go to the chiropractor, and we're not going to pick and choose which chiropractors, we're going to do this. We're just going to say, if the chiropractor practices in Humboldt County, we want to waive deductible. Because if the chiropractor is not in-network, the employee can still go to them. They just have to pay the $750 deductible, and then they would pay 10% of the bill after that. Once they start paying 10%, the cost of seeing the chiropractor actually is going to be less for them than it is today because it's probably 40 bucks, right? 40 or 50 bucks. So at 10%, it's going to cost them $4 or $5. Once they meet their $750 deductible, it's going to cost them 10%. If you have an employee that goes to the chiropractor a lot, or an employee that often meets their deductible, the new plan is actually going to cost them less to see a chiropractor that's out of-network than seeing a chiropractor that's in-network. Does that make sense?
Vaguely.
Because the employee has, the employee has a $750 deductible. Or, so once that deductible's met, the employee only has to pay 10% of what's left. So, you know, if they've met that $750 deductible through doctor's offices and doctors...
Places.
Other, yeah. When they go to the chiro, the chiro's going to say, okay, save this $40. The employee says, shows the card. Card's going to pay that claim at 10%. So, employee's going to pay $4, and the insurance is going to pay the rest. So, if somebody's already met deductible and you've got an out-of-network doctor, the employee's probably going to pay less every time. We want the docs in the network, and we want your $10 copay to work because that's what they're used to, and nobody likes change. So that's what we're working for. That's what we're striving for.
So you guys are going to do the contacting of those chiropractors to get, try to work that out for that?
Right. Use your association with Blue Cross, maybe.
Yes, definitely. But I wanted to bring up, so, everybody in IGHCP has a report like this. I mean, nobody's excluded from that. Everybody has some disruption. Some people have seven pages of disruption, Blue Choice. One group I'm working very closely with is the city of Council of Love. They're on the Nebraska border. They have vast majority of their people, Doctor in Nebraska. I mean, so, I can tell you that since our meeting in February, over 1,000 providers have gotten on Blue Choice over in Nebraska. So, we're making major headway, major headway. But, you know, and what so many of them have said is, we didn't have any reason to be. We didn't have any reason to join Blue Choice because we didn't have anybody coming in with Blue Choice card. Well, now, they've got the city of Council of Love, which is over 500 employees. They have Potawatomi County, which is 500 employees. They have Council of Love Water Works, and they have Manona County. So, all of a sudden, you've got a lot more Blue Choice cards in pockets. And as they walk in those doors, the physicians are like, yeah, I don't really want to get paid less, but I don't want to lose all these issues.
That looks fine, too.
Right. So it's a little bit of the chicken and the egg. And trust me, we're working on it, and we don't want there to be disruption in Humboldt County for your employees. And Rick was very adamant about that, very vocal at the IGH, at the IGHCP meeting. So vocal that he tried to hold the vote.
I didn't get my way.
Did you?
Yeah, I thought, I thought...
He did. I mean, he pulled me aside, had a private conversation with me. He tried to stop the vote because he said, I don't like being part of a vote when I just got educated on it the last day and a half, and I can't talk to my other supervisors and give my employees a heads-up. And I respect that, but it's not my, it's not my vote. I don't have a vote. I know what it does, the work and gets the information to the group, and then the group does the voting. And I didn't, I hated that he or anybody felt like they were pigeonholes. But there was, in the board's defense, a huge sense of urgency because I can't go out and visit with groups like I am today until that vote is through. The other thing I can't do is I can't work with Walmart to work with providers if there's no vote because Walmart's people are not going to hit the pavement trying to get these providers in if they're not sure what you're going to do. They're just not. So, but I, but I can tell you that he tried hard.
I think it's a credit to our group to have the same person setting that table every year. You used to go down there and get educated one year and then you change.
Right.
So it's really good that Rick's hanging there.
I mean, yeah, he definitely does.
We keep bringing that up so you keep going. Just in case you didn't put two and a half. Well, we do appreciate it.
Yeah, and as many of you are welcome to attend those meetings, it doesn't have to just be one person. Especially if there's something that's going to be on the table like this year that's pretty important relative to that vote, we encourage participation, you know, at those meetings. So, anyway...
So is it safe to say in the next couple of years, this could fluctuate a step or two from the Select to the Blue Choice to...
No, I don't see you ever going back to Alliance Select.
Oh, I didn't figure we'd go up, but is there a possibility that, you know, with the laws changing?
That's so gray. I don't...
We don't want to look at it that way.
I can tell you that I don't want to see any changes with IGHCP for a few years.
Perfect.
Because this is a big one.
Yeah.
And I don't, I don't like change either.
No.
I mean, because I have 30 of you guys that this is impacting. So, it's a lot to articulate. It's a lot, it's a lot of work. And I don't ever want IGHCP to have the image of coming in and watering down employees' benefits. That's not what we're about. That's why I didn't want to make changes to your copays, and I didn't want to make your deductible go up. I truly tried to make changes that impacted very few people. And if you look at these two pages, these are the claims for Humboldt County that are effective or not. If I looked at all of your claims, you would have hundreds and hundreds of pages of claims. So this is not affecting very many claims. And in my opinion, where there is, where there is a disruption, and we can't get through that disruption by getting a provider or two on, I have a Plan B that we can go to where you guys can use your own funding to, you know, partial self-fund your way out of this. Okay? So, that's, but as you go through here, you're going to see that most of your claims, because again, if those claims are black, there's no impact. The claims that are red are people that are paying a copayment today and that drug in Ju, or, excuse me, and that claim in July is going to be processed to deductible and co-insurance. So, in my opinion, the employee's worst-case scenario, if the worst-case happens, they're going to meet their deductible sooner if they have claim out of-network. Their deductible isn't any higher out of-network than it is today. Their out-of-pocket isn't any higher, but they're going to meet it a little sooner if they go outside of Blue Choice. But their ultimate liability is exactly the same. The most of them are going to pay is still $750 deductible and a $1,500 out-of-pocket max. They're not going to pay more than that. So by the letter of the law, we didn't change your benefits.
So one thing you also mentioned at the meeting, some of your, what I call, top-shelf drugs.
Yes, that's, that's on the next page.
Okay, I'm going to get that.
So the last thing I want to say about this is go back to your benefits where I said I want to talk about that in-network, out-of-network co-insurance. You currently have a 90% co-insurance in-network and a 70% co-insurance out-of-network. So what that means is, if you are in-network, the employee's going to pay 10% after they've met their deductible, up to $1,500. If they go out of-network, the employee's going to pay $750, and then they're going to pay 30% until they get to $1,500. So, I like to refer to co-insurance as a speed limit. Okay, so the co-insurance is kind of like the speed limit you're going to drive after you've met your deductible while you're working your way to your out-of-pocket. Okay, no matter what the co-insurance is, you're done at $1,500. The employee is done. If they go to out-of-network, they're going to drive 30 miles an hour so they get to that $1,500. Whereas, if they're in-network, they're going to drive 10 miles an hour. So they're going to take, it's going to take them a little longer to get to that $1,500 at the in-network co-insurance than it is the out-of-network. If you make a decision to partial self-fund an out-of-network provider, I would recommend that you also change that co-insurance to 90% so that it's the same as in-network. It doesn't cost the county any more dollars because you're capped, you know, and it doesn't cost the employee any more dollars. How fast they get there could change, but the end liability to both the county and the employee is capped. Again, how fast you get there is what changes. Does that make sense?
Do you understand that, Chris? Well, you're the one that deals with, right?
Yeah, but I, this isn't really mine. I don't have the call on this.
No, I know, but I'm just asking if she's the one that will field the phone calls when people are...
Well, hopefully she sends them to us.
Uh-huh.
Yeah. Here's why I say...
You have the same public look that we all did, remember?
Here's the reason I'm bringing it up. Let's say we can't get the chiropractor in or two that you want, and you guys say, okay, Denise, we're just going to waive the deductible for chiro. So the employees, they have to pay $750. They just have to pay co-insurance. If they go in and they pay co-insurance to a non-network chiropractor, do you want that co-insurance to be 10%, which is going to be $4 on a $40 chiro visit? Or do you want it to be 70 or 30%, which is going to be $15, which is going to be more than what they're paying today? So I'm just, in order to try to keep...
Less disruption.
Less disruption, and it really doesn't have any cost impact for the county, I would probably, if it was my decision, I would probably just say, make our co-insurance 90% for in and out. It's just on the partial self-fund. Walmart's co-insurance, you don't have any say in. I mean, there's a 70%, there's a 70% in and 60% out, so there isn't even a difference yet.
Doing that, people shopping for different doctor, providers either that way. Just won't make it the same.
Yeah. So, and I, we don't have to decide that today. I'll sort of, we'll sort of go back a little. Let's wait and see what happens.
While we're on this page, can you explain the three gray columns?
Yeah, so the gray is what we're purchasing from Walmart. And then the white is what the employees... And then the white is what the employees actually receive. So, we're actually buying, the county's purchasing a five thousand dollar deductible from Walmart. So, every employee in Humboldt County has a five hundred, or a five thousand dollar deductible. Like Eric yourself, if you were to call Walmart and say, "How much of my deductible have I met?" They're going to refer to the five thousand dollar deductible.
Mm-hmm.
So, you're buying a five thousand dollar deductible, and then Humboldt County pays the claims that fall between five thousand dollars down to seven fifty. So, the employee pays the first seven fifty, then Humboldt pays until you get to five thousand, and then Walmart starts paying after that. So, that's what you're self-funding.
Okay.
And then that, your, your reserve account that has that four hundred thousand dollars, that, that money is used to pay the difference between that five thousand down to seven fifty.
Okay.
Are you going to provide a list of doctors that Humboldt County employees have seen that will be falling out of network now?
They all have it, yes.
Yeah, I got the list already.
Yep. And, and the thing that I cannot emphasize enough is when you look at that list, um, remember that if it's red, the claims will be processed differently. If it's on the list but it's black, the claim will be processed the same. So, there's a two-page report there, but there's probably, you know, a quarter of the people on those two pages that are going to have an impact in the claim process. So, the reason it's different is because three people out of the network...
What's the difference between this and this?
It's not ten dollars. It's deductible and co-insure.
This and this. What changes up to fifteen hundred instead of seven fifty?
I don't know.
So, when you, well, we, we, okay, so that if you figure your explanation makes sense for the top two columns, what about the bottom two for the last grade area up to the next white area where it says out-of-pocket, family, single, is much higher, then it goes to fifteen hundred and three thousand. Explain that.
So, so the, um, everybody has a deductible, co-insure, and out-of-pocket. The deductible is what you pay first, and then you pay a co-insure until you get to the out-of-pocket. So, what we're buying from Walmart, what you're buying from Walmart, is a five thousand dollar deductible with seventy percent co-insure to a maximum out-of-pocket of sixty-three fifty. So, another way of saying it is the, um, the out-of-pocket match you're buying is sixty-three fifty, but the, all the employees have to pay is fifteen hundred. So, the county is self-funding or buying down the difference between sixty-three fifty and fifteen hundred. So, the most the county...
And by, by doing this, it keeps our rates lower.
Way low, yeah. Well, in fact, if you guys, let's say you left IGHCP and said, "Walmart, provide us with a quote just to be on our own." The seven hundred and fifty dollar deductible is not even available.
Not even an option.
It's not even an option anymore.
It's not a tough... It's true, four thousand.
It, it, yeah, it's much higher.
Okay, so I, I guess if I'd have read that now, but the explanation helped a lot.
Yeah.
So, it's out-of-pocket cost...
Yes.
Of fifteen hundred dollars.
The dark gray is the actual amount that Blue Cross gets, put it that way.
Yeah.
Right.
So...
And the white is what the employee pays.
Right.
And the difference between the two is what the county pays.
Right. So, the most the county's going to pay on any individual is forty-eight fifty. Four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, because that's the difference between sixty-three fifty and fifteen hundred.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, remember when I said if you wanted to change your co-insure, it doesn't, it doesn't change the county's liability? That's because your liability is capped at forty-eight fifty. So, if you change the speed limit, that the employee drives between the deductible and the out-of-pocket, it doesn't change your overall liability. It's forty-eight fifty. So, if the employee has a ten thousand dollar claim or a million dollar claim, you're only on the hook for forty-eight fifty.
But sometimes they won't make that forty-eight fifty because they're...
A lot of times, yeah, they won't make it.
Basically, in a nutshell, the, the Blue Choice penalizes the healthy people a little bit more. The people that don't reach their deductible, they're going to, they're going to be paying more out of their pocket.
If they don't stay in network.
Yeah, if they don't stay in network.
So, I don't know. I mean, how far of a drive is it to the border?
Which border?
Probably Minnesota is your closest border, right?
Sixty miles.
Yeah, an hour.
Sixty mile.
So, think of it this way. If you have people driving an hour for their office care, their doctor's office visits, those are the ones that are going to be penalized. If their doctor's office visits are occurring here, then they're, they're in-network. If somebody's driving an hour for hospital services, the, the process of that claim is exactly the same, whether you have the current network or the new network. The only difference is, if you go out of network, it's not a ten dollar copay. It's deductible and co-insure. That's, that's the difference. So, we need all of your employees to do their preventative stuff, their family practice stuff in Iowa, if possible.
And you can, I think Ben just asked, you actually can provide a list so that...
Um, I, it's easier to provide this list of the disruption than it is the list of doctors in, because the doctor's...
So, in case the disruption is the sixty-mile drive. I mean, the one that...
Pretty much.
So, that they can look and say, "Well, this isn't going to, you can't get them in the Blue Choice. Maybe we can check, go into the..."
So, let's say somebody's diagnosed with, um, cancer. And they want to, they don't want a doctor in Humboldt. They want to go to Mayo. Or they want to go to MD Anderson in Houston. If they go for cancer treatment in, out of network, that claim is going to be processed exactly the same as it is today. There's absolutely no change for those people. You can still go anywhere in the United States. Your, your international coverage is exactly the same as it is today.
So, bottom line, I think we covered it, but just, man, I didn't know we were going to have an insurance seminar, but...
I know, sorry, but I want you to get...
The out-of-pocket, with the change from Alliance Select to Blue Choice, the out-of-pocket to any individual and/or family will not change.
Will not change.
Because you look at that, out-of-pocket will not change.
Correct. What you have in front of you is the set of benefits that your employees receive today.
So, I mean...
It's today. If you want it, you could tear that page out and give it out on July second with the new Blue Choice plan, and it's unchanged.
So, their out-of-pocket, with the change, does not change.
Not, not changed.
Just depends on how fast you get there.
Right, so I mean, that's...
My office is going to cost more Mayo for me now.
Yes. So, there's not very many of those, um, but there are a few.
That's kind of what I look at. If I'm diagnosed with cancer, I'm going to...
Well, you're going to hit your deductible.
Yeah, I'm going to pay my maximum out-of...
But the people who don't hit their deductibles are going to pay more.
If you just go...
Mainly in the chiropractic field.
Oh, yeah, there's hardly any chiropractors.
But she's working on some of those might be bought into it.
Yeah.
I don't treat a huge deal with that. That's confusing as hell.
Right, right. We haven't had any providers taken up.
That's where I kind of look at it.
My chiropractor says, "Just a study to get on that, get in that list."
Excuse me.
She says she's got some, I believe, Fort Dodge. And she goes, "There's another chiropractor at Edinburgh and another practice down there before she can get on that list."
So, what they do is they look at the population of people that have Blue Choice. And then they say from there, "How many chiropractors for this population need to be in the network?" So, if, if in Fort Dodge, there are several within Blue Choice, they probably do have a lead.
And the thing is, they might have one already in our area, but that person probably doesn't see hardly anybody.
Yeah, I mean, she does her one in her practice. Yeah, I don't know. It's the senior chiropractor there who's done a lot for myself.
Yeah.
That doesn't...
That's what they do.
Yeah.
They get around it.
Well, he, when she can't use his... So, generally speaking, there's something about that that's wrong to me because when, uh, established practice gets in, they get in by tax ID. So, if, if the practice is in, then, then everybody in the practice is in.
Oh, really?
Typically.
My son went through that Newton. He had to wait in line and be able to get in because there were too many other competitors.
Yeah.
He finally made it through all of them.
Right.
But it took a while.
So, again, you guys, here's the thing, is that, um, the biggest impact from going to Blue Choice as far as disruption was the chiropractors. And, and you're not alone. Every single meeting that I'm going to is the chiropractors across the state of Iowa. So, going back to the dollars of this, does it make sense to take a seven million dollar increase over thirty groups? Or does it make sense to work collectively, let's try to get some in. If we can't get them in, then your county can make a decision to partial self-fund it, and your decision isn't going to impact Clay County. They get to make their own decision. If they want to spend their own money to make this work, then they can, and you can. And I think there's a way that you can do it that's economical, that's not going to cost you a bunch of money to get it done. So, that's Plan B. Pardon me?
It's the senior chiropractor in that practice, then it's in the whole, then everybody that's...
That's typically, it usually, they usually come in by tax ID numbers, and then there's like a prevention process that has to happen. But if the doc's already in with Alliance Select, then they've gone through the prevention, and they should be in. If the, if the tax ID is the same, or all of them. And I don't want to pretend to know every single situation with every chiropractor, because I, I don't. Um, that's my, that's been my experience.
How many of the thirty groups have wellness programs?
Thank you.
We talked about it. We never went into that.
Yeah, I would say, um...
That's just me. Everybody looks at me.
Maybe a quarter.
There's something we all look at.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I would start by getting a committee together, like an insurance committee, because you're going to need people within your group kind of working on this, um, you know, throughout, throughout the year. And then I can work with like local providers and D nurses, you know, those types of things so that you can get, um, screening and...
Well, we better move on, see if we get to your next claim.
Yep. Okay, so next is the drugs. The drugs, um, have limited impact.
That's five.
Yeah, no, it's the next page.
Last and fourth.
Just right ahead of five.
Okay, so along, there were two things that we changed. We changed the network to Blue Choice, and then we changed, uh, the list of drugs. So, this has even less impact. So, you had, um, twenty-five prescriptions out of all of the scripts that get filled in a twelve-month period that are currently on your list that are, that are getting dropped, excuse me, getting dropped off the new list. So, and, and know this, that some of these drugs are getting dropped off your current list, too. And these are, these are decisions that Walmart makes, and then they tell us after the fact. But, so let's look at this. So, um, the first drug, Alvesco, is a drug in the adrenal class.
Yeah.
And you had one employee fill that drug two times in a twelve-month period. Okay, so, so you had one employee fill adrenal, or, um, Alvesco, two times in a twelve-month period. What that tells me is that was not a drug that they needed to take frequently. It's not a, um, um, you know, something that they're taking monthly certainly. Um, the, the drug that is taken, anything that's got like that ten on there, um, those are drugs that are being taken pretty frequently. There's a seven. Um, that means they're taking it, they're getting it filled almost every month. These drugs are what Walmart refers to as, um, limited effectiveness. In other words, they, there are other drugs that do the same thing that are more effective. And that's the ones they want us taking. They don't want us taking these ones. So, if there's not a single drug in the therapeutic class description that doesn't have an equivalent option. Okay, so, um, let's say, I'm trying to find one that I can pronounce, and I know what it is. Eladell. Eladell is used for, um, can be used for skin infections. Um, Eladell is an expensive drug. And if you, and Eladell has other, other drugs that do the same thing as that particular drug does, available to your employee. So, there's not a single case where the employee's going to say, the employee's currently taking a drug, the drug gets taken away, and there's not a secondary drug that the employee can take. There's not a single case of that. In addition, let's say, um, the one drug on it that I know has a generic, or, okay, so like Cialis. Cialis, there are like, there are several other drugs that are the same as Cialis, that have the same outcome. Um, Viagra is one of them. Viagra, Cialis is no longer going to be on your list, but Viagra is going to be on your list. Viagra also has a generic equivalent. So, in that case, the employee might not even realize that. So, they could get the generic equivalent, and it would cost them zero dollars. And today, they're paying a forty dollar copay, or thirty dollar copay, zero, fifteen, thirty. So, they could now get that generic equivalent for zero dollars because you have a zero dollar generic copay. Okay? So, um, the drug impact, I don't think is going to be, um...
It's pretty practically nil.
It's practically nil. It affected less than one percent of IGHCP users.
And the rep from Blue Cross said, "There is an exception if the doctor says you absolutely have to take this name drug."
And I have seen that. So, um, yeah, there's a, there are a few drugs that for whatever reason don't work for some people. So, if you have one of those, and, um, you've tried taking that other drug and it doesn't work, then Walmart will make an exception, and you can be on the drug.
So, it's virtually not a case to go...
Not a big deal. If you have an employee that is, that is currently taking one of these drugs, they're going to be contacted directly by Walmart, um, and to, to let them know that there's drugs coming off the list in July. And this isn't the first time this has happened. I mean, many of you might have been on Crestor, and about eighteen months ago, you probably received, if you were on it, you received a letter from Walmart that said, "It's coming off the list. You can't take it anymore. You got to go to something else." So, again, Walmart does this on their own, and we find out after the fact. So, they'll receive a letter telling them they need, they need a different drug. Last is your life insurance, um, no change in your life insurance costs or benefits, zero percent renewal. Tab six is a list of our current members, county, city, schools that are participating in IGHCP. And again, we are working with handful for July one entry. Some will come, some won't. Um, Montgomery County is the most recent one that I've looked at. They meet next week, and I think they'll vote to come in, so they would be effective, several of them.
Well, thank you for your presentation.
Yeah, I know it's a lot, and, um...
It's a lot, lot.
It is a lot, but I'd rather tell you too much and have you remember fifty percent of it, but it's not enough.
Well, that might be a fair... Do we answer fifty percent?
It's just the city of Algonquin.
Yes. The Shrews County is not in it. And I don't know why off the top of my head, but I, I kind of know the status of all the counties in Iowa. Um, I just don't have a committed member.
Well, nor should you.
Yes, once you have had time to...
You've got plenty on your head. It's the way it is.
Once you've had time to absorb this, and you guys talk about it after I leave, um, give me a call if you want me to come back up to go through it again. I haven't scheduled with Winnebago yet, so I'm still, still got to get up there sometime over the next few weeks, so I can...
Hopefully, when you're coming back to meet one of the other towns, you'd rather...
I mean, yeah, I try, I almost always schedule multiple, but, um, but it's just the fact that I haven't gone to Winnebago yet. I'll come right by there, so...
Perfect.
So, we're not at a spot of voting on anything for this. We have time. Is that what you're talking about, that we don't have the official say-so?
Right, so the Walmart Plan Design has already officially been voted on.
Okay.
It's already Blue Choice.
Right, what you guys do as a county, you've got plenty of time. Um, I want this... I want this year for you to require mandatory meetings by your employees and asking every group do that. I haven't asked you to do that for a really, really long time. I'd like to be able to get in front of your employees to explain this so that everybody understands that the last thing I want is somebody not to get it and then saying that they have a $10 copay somewhere and end up having to pay a $750 backup bill. We don't want that to happen. So I would like to see mandatory meetings and we can do like, you know, early morning to get the road guys and in the evening wanting to get spouses, you know, I'll do whatever you want. But in order to get the employee meetings done, I'd like to be doing those in May. So you're probably going to need to make a decision between now and mid-April.
And our decision basically is how much we think we might want to self-fund, pretty much.
Right.
Seven-year.
Yeah. Keeping in mind that you have a very healthy reserve. And then again, we can work on that on a one-on-one as you guys have talked about it. And I'll keep you abreast of where we're at with getting a power visit. And that's going to be...
Yeah, that'd be very important.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much for your hard work.
Good stuff, Denise.
Appreciate it.
You bet.
To drive up here.
Yeah. Let me know if you have any questions.
All right. Thanks, Denise.
Okay.
Do we have a committee to...
Yes, can we have a short recess?
Because I need a...
Yes, we do need a short recess.
Okay.
Let's take a quick break.
As I said, we don't have anything if you want to...
I've got committees.
Oh, committees, yeah. Gotcha, all right.
In a block.
Yeah.
I'm not going to argue.
Surprised you lasted as long as you did.